Calling to order, the committee noticed meeting of the Aurora Economic Development Authority. We have to have a roll call.
Yup.
Hansen here. Hess here. Klosic here. Godey here. Grigor. Here. Alright, so we have our brief agenda before us, but the principal item of which would be the approval of the contract with the Department of Iron Road Resource and Rehabilitation for the loan for the building on the site. It's voluminous. We've been assured that councils went through it with one little glitch that as far as I know anyway was a provision, I don't know if I have that number on the page, it was the one that had to do with limitation of liability or indemnification. So Section 11.1.
11.1, yup.
Right. What was so, I guess, I don't know about the rest of you, but my review was it looked to be in order with the exception of 11.1, which probably should have some limitation on our liability. And I think it'd be appropriate, assuming since the city administrator and I gather the attorney are agree, that we should entertain a motion to approve the proposed agreement subject to the revision of Section 11.1 to the satisfaction of the city attorney?
Yup.
Alright, someone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilor Hess. Support.
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Godey. So, any discussion? It's a major undertaking, but not one that...
We didn't want to come in.
It's a non-recourse loan.
It is a non-recourse loan.
Yeah, so it does not in any way, except for the indemnification clause, go to other resources of the city and essentially deals with rental or lease revenues from facility resales, right? Either way, hang it up. So we have a motion, anybody else have questions?
Will that 11.1 then be come back for revote?
No, you're approving contingent upon that change and they'll be okay with that change. If they're not, then it will have to come back, but it'll agree to it.
So with us approving this, and then obviously checks going, starting to flow and that sort of thing, does the EDA have to bring on an account or are we going to use the city's account? Do we don't? Can we use the city's account because we're separate entities?
Yeah, so we'll still use Kimberly, we'll still be doing that. And we're already seeing stuff coming in from the $100,000 infrastructure grant.
Okay.
So it'll be the same thing. We'll just be, it's like the water plant, we're drawing out of this part of money and you're drawing out of this part of money. We may have more EDA meetings to approve those things, but yeah.
And the HRA operates the same way? Kimberly pretty much does the accounting, but if there's a, I don't know, maybe there's no accounting for them?
I don't know.
There's just going to be a lot of accounting activity?
The HRA does all their own.
Okay.
That's because the HRA has their own separate tax level.
Oh, okay.
Whereas EDA does not.
Okay.
Yep, so let's take care of the house likely within that million dollar grant.
And the IRRB retains the ultimate decision to disperse on a particular expense item, right?
Yeah, we send in some middles to them, they look at it, make sure it's approved, they sign off on it. We pay it, they give us the reimbursement. It's a reimbursement loan.
Other questions or concerns? I've seen none. Let's proceed to a vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Second item of our thing is to approve the title services for the West Industrial Park. We have a proposal here or an estimate here. Did you do any adding up?
It's like a new backstory on this. Matt Schulberg from the IRRB called me Monday and said, "Oh, by the way, because this is a loan, we got to do title work on it." None of us heard that. So it was a learning process for me. So I asked them who they recommended they'd used All American Title in the past, since it's a professional service, we can use them. There has been some work done already, we've done an Alter with Alta survey, we've done an RLS, which is a registered land survey, we did all the surveying already and whatnot. So I'm not sure that we'll encumber all of these costs, but we will encumber a lot of them. And the funds have to run through the title company, that's kind of who acts as the banker. So that's why you can see there's 10 draws, so we'll make those draws throughout the course of the loan and whatnot. So we need to do this, part of it is, is they have to come out and take pictures before we start digging on Monday. So it's kind of important that we get a loan and they get it taken care of, so.
And that particular parcel has been owned by the city, right, for many decades?
And we did, we did all the title work as far as the history and we parted the Alta, so there's no rest, it's all there. It's already been cleared and done. But the other part of the title work with the draws and the recording fees and, you know, the closing fees and the service and all that stuff has to be paid. So this is all eligible reimbursement through the EDA, through the loan, so the Aurora loan encumbered in this. It's just, it's just a service that, it's a consultant that we have to have on board to make the loan work.
So just a rough looking here, it seems to indicate to me we need to authorize proceeding at this point for expenditures up to a certain amount?
Yeah, I would say, there's 25 on here, but you could say 30 in case something comes up, but it's, and I'm not even sure that we will use all of this. Like I said, we've got a lot of stuff that we've done already. And they have that, we've sent it to them, so.
And these will be funds that come out of the grant or the loan?
The loan.
The loan.
These are loan expenses.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve title services for up to $30,000 for West Industrial Park construction. Is there a motion by Councilor Hess?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Hansen. Any further questions or discussion on those services? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Alright, so we've authorized up to 30,000. Anything else that should come before?
No, I'll give you guys kind of an updated five o'clock, I guess, small business that we had today.
So a regular question on this EDA. At some point, I don't know when it is, do we have to start kind of coming up with incentives for businesses? You know, do we have to have a playbook so that when a business comes to town says, "Yeah, I might be interested in your industrial park, what can you offer us?" Or, you know what I mean? That we agree to ahead of time?
Tax free for a number of years?
Like a foot or something?
Well, I'm not saying that, but I mean, you know, yeah, that's an example, I'm not saying a tip, but...
I'll take that case by case, as people come in, we can meet, I mean, we can call meeting anytime. So as people come in and things like that, we can do that case by case.
But should we have some boilerplate?
Like, for example, we don't want to plat the rest of the industrial park?
No, I don't want to plat, but I'm just talking about what incentives can we offer a business? You know, we agree on that ahead of time.
We have some inherent powers to do a whole range of tools for economic development, but maybe you're saying, look at the whole toolbox and say we're going to emphasize this one or that one?
Yeah, maybe it looks what we do on a case by case basis, if we already have the toolbox. I don't even know what's in the toolbox. And then, and then we as a council have to agree, what tools do we want to use in the toolbox?
You know, between the HRA and the EDA and the inherent powers of the city, believe me, from being a recovering attorney, there is a huge toolbox of potential things, but it might, might be helpful for us to get an education on what our tools are.
I would recommend having a worst man and give us a presentation, and we know exactly where to come in.
Yeah.
I'll present on that, it may cost a little bit.
Well, we don't need to do it like tomorrow, but I'm just, you know, as this building gets built or whatever, and if other people start inquiring, hopefully, while building another building, it's like, I don't want to be caught flat, whatever.
Understood.
Yeah, right, so understood. Um, let's see, any other questions on our authority, since we're a new body basically?
Can we add numbers to the board?
You'd have to change the laws, but you can, I think it's up to the senate you have to do.
Okay. Because I was wondering if we, you know, if a citizen, yeah, if a citizen wants to come up.
Odd number.
You always want an odd number, so you don't want to add two.
And I don't have any names or anybody, but I'm just wondering if there's citizens. I mean, we can't get citizens to sit on other boards unless they want to sit on this one, but this has been pretty popular on the track.
Well, a sober lining of this whole process is that we're now creating this whole new set of opportunities for economic development and centers. City Council, you answered nothing there? Okay.
I think if the copper nickel gets blown, there'll be a need for that industrial park.
Yeah, yeah, target was cyclical, you know, cycling city. There are some real spinoff possibilities or something, yeah. So, alright, I believe our efforts here are done. And we also have any other matters? I'm gonna say a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Klosic. Support. Supported by Councilor Godey. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned, we tell our agenda planning meeting and format. Alright, it's Thursday, October 3rd. We're at the Aurora Community Center for a regular agenda setting meeting of the Aurora City Council. This is a time where we don't take any action and we're simply discussing amongst us some of the issues we anticipate either coming up with the council meeting or for the city. So I'll call the meeting to order, that's probably 5:01. And as his customer, we normally look to the city administrator to tell us where his information to provide.
Is there a clean other state library in here? Bob, do you have an update or?
Yeah, I got a few things.
Okay, so let Bob go first.
Today is day one of the three day book sale, which will be going on also from 1:00 10 to 5:00 and Saturday 10 to 2:00. So if you get a chance to go over there. The biggest thing right now is the library will be closed October 9th through 11th for needed repairs to the building and they can't have public in at the time. So the service hours will only be 10 to 2 during those three days. If they're going to kind of run, you can drop books off at the drop in the front, but if you, if you want to pick up a whole, technically you're going to do the old speakeasy thing, you go to the back parking lot and call them and they'll run it out to you. So that'll be those three days. And if they have to extend it for whatever reason, that further notice will be given. If you need Wi-Fi, you can get it in the parking lot behind City Hall. If you need other computer services or printing services or suggestions, you can hit another library, the Coit Lakes or Gilbert. Also, the Pumpkin Fest will be held that Saturday. The library will still hold their events. If they can't do it in the library, they made arrangements to have it in City Hall, so that'll be, find out when you get there, I guess. Other than that?
That's it. Thanks for doing that on behalf of the library. Let's see, city administrator, we have our city engineer here.
We do? Yeah.
You guys, plenty to inform us about.
I'll keep it shorter tonight, but the big news is we got all of our permits in place for the industrial park, so we are ready to rock and roll. So UN is our dirt work contractor, they're going to mobilize on Monday with their excavators and gozers. The critical path item is the foundation for the building, so that's, I mean, that's where the primary work is going to start. The goal is to get the utilities on the street in this year as well, and so I would imagine they'll start using pipe at some point here this month and start putting water in as well. But big news, I mean, you'll be, you'll be seeing a lot of action, it's been a long time coming, but that project's going to go. The other item to share is the Central Avenue pavement repairs have been, have been made. I walked the project with the contractors foreman today, there's a few areas that are going to correct. I don't know if anyone's drove it, there's still a few bumps, and so they're going to take those down and make those nice, nice and clean though. So we'll chip seal it next year, we'll have a nice, nice road, so.
So when they do the chip seal, Richard probably knows as well, but is there like a re-grinding of the surface on then, or it's just right on whatever the surface is?
Yup, they'll take, they'll clean the surface and then they put like an oil emulsion down and then they put the P rock over the top and then they, they pack it in and then they pick up the excess and it's pretty much as simple as that.
So any distortions in the surface or anything, those will just be reflected in the?
Generally, yes, it's not going to fill cracks, it's not going to repair, you know, alligator or anything like that. So there is a bad section in front of the community center here that's probably going to show right through, but most of the pavement will get a good five years of life after you have doing this, so.
How long do they close a road to do that? Does it have to sit a few days or?
No, it's, I mean, it's generally close it to apply it and it's open immediately after. Is that typically how you guys handle the chip seal process?
Yes.
Yeah.
So when they chip seal the road and pavement, there were a lot of complaints about cut tires and that sort of thing, are you aware of that?
I'm not, but the county engineers here.
Was that a factor? Was that fictional?
Well, not one bit.
Well, I'm aware of it a little bit. There was a project last summer on Highway 4, the mountain trail. What it was, is the aggregate that was provided for the class five was crushed and so it was made of fracture, a lot of angularity to it, so I don't know why, but we're not sure exactly, but it was piercing a lot of tires, a lot of tires.
So it's something we just might want to get ahead of? And put a statement out there saying this is the kind of aggregate we're going to use so we don't get a lot of negativity before we get started?
Are there specs on the type of aggregate that has to be provided?
The aggregate on the county project that punctured all the tower tires met state specs. It was just that the, it was a, the type of crushing process, as best as we could tell, produced a very odd angular interest. I've never heard of that happening. Neither have we.
I haven't either, but it was quite noisy.
I lost a tire.
Did you?
I sure did.
Yeah, it just seems like it's a relatively refined science, specifications, right? You know, it's like cement, you know, in terms of only ingredients there and so on and.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very common pavement treatment, but I mean, if you want to issue a notice or something, it may absolutely be a grievance of that next spring and I'll make a note.
Just to, yeah, just to get ahead of it, because I've never had, heard of a problem before that one.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
Tombed, run it through the grinder another day.
Were they using P rock or little B of bronze?
It's that similar size, correct?
But not the stone?
And it's angular, correct?
For chips?
Yes. Actually typically it's a natural stone. Is it? Okay.
So natural, is it naturally rounded?
Yeah. So I imagine being reassuring.
Any other questions from council? I guess as we go into winter here, we're going to be finalizing our plans for next summer's construction, so more to come on that. But it's going to be the utility project likely behind Newty Drive and then the Third Avenue Avenue project, so. Anyone else want to highlight? Mr. Minister?
You've got the floor, my bad.
Yeah, I understand.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Say, it was brought up today at the community advisory panel meeting. Paul Peltier in particular was saying that should be a legislative agenda, you know, put forward, and I know we've got some carryovers, right, of requests for bonding like on First Avenue, right? But I'm just wondering if there's any other thing we ought to target for potential funding related to projects that are outside both the water project and the industrial park project?
We have a lot of projects that we can target.
Yeah.
So that's not a problem.
Yeah, I think he was inviting, he was saying, he specifically said, Mayor Reiger, he said, "If you're, if you have projects, let us know," you know, kind of a thing, and I think we probably are talking those over with the lobbyists too, but...
Or housing projects would be a prime example of money that we need to get to get that thing done.
Yeah, the past lesson is, no harm in asking, right?
And I guess you mentioned the water project, I can give a brief update on that. So all of the water main is, is in the ground for that project. All the mainline distribution from Pineville all to Sina Akers is in the ground. We're pressure testing, we got to do a bacteria test, and then we're coordinating the well shutdown and get them on the public system. I would anticipate that here the next couple of weeks, we'll have that all wrapped up. They have some cleanup work to do, we have a punch list in their hands and we're working through that, but they're, they're on schedule, so.
Or the budget too?
Yes, yup, yup. We're, I think we'll finish probably 2 to 250, I'd say, very cautiously, optimistically, which makes sense because we cut out the industrial park piece, so that's kind of the, if we would have put all that in, it would have came in right on budget, so.
Since the abandonment of that well, the community well, is that included in the cost of the water project? Or is that to be done by them?
It is not, that is something I want to bring to the water board next week to discuss, two weeks, I believe?
Yeah, the third one's it.
Yeah, third one's it. That is something I want to discuss with the water board to have. Since USA is here onsite, that's familiar with the system, can we have them break that connection because it's technically not in contract to do that, so. And then as far as coordinating with the, the well shutdown, we'll have to work with the manager at Sina Akers to get that one as well.
And just historically, that shutting down of that well on purpose was a critical factor in the state being willing to provide the approvals and the funding money.
Yup.
Because it reduces one more water appropriation source and consolidates it with a larger one. So I remember that was, as we were down in the legislature, otherwise asking for money, everybody wanted to hear those magic words.
And we had it off on Tuesday, we tied in to that system, so we're technically hooked in, we just have to test everything before we turn everything over.
So by, say the first of November, things should be operational?
Hundred percent.
Well, that's good to finally see that gets through under budget and ahead of time, actually, so that's good. Let's see, what else? So any other, I'm trying to think if there are any other water project related issues. So the work on the intake site has not started?
That has not started, we're still working on the value engineering with the contractor on that.
Right, okay.
So I do think it's going to go this fall, into the winter though. And they can do a lot of that work, I think, through the winter as well.
Yeah, and let's see, so the treatment plant is proceeding at some pace?
Treatment plant is well underway, yup, they have the concrete tanks there generally and I think they're starting to build any two, I don't know if they're, you know, these are two, I don't think they're out there really.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, but they should be putting footings in pretty quick here because they want to have walls up over the building through the winter, so. And that's going to be like in a day, you'll see that, when we set the panels.
Oh yeah, it goes quick. And then the trucks will shoot up.
So it looks like we're not doing anything and all this is going to go.
They end up so hard to be the same way, right? Like they're going to spend the next two months putting the footings in and then all of a sudden bam, they're going to have a shell.
Yeah. Alright, well that sounds exciting. Any other engineering issue concerns that councilors have? So?
I do have updates for you. We work, we're working with AP on a temporary warming shack. We'll have a construction trailer delivered November 1st. It will, it's basically a construction office there, it's got tubes in it, so the rink attendant will have an office down there, it has electric baseboard heat. So when it's delivered, we will run power from the command and power it out of that. It's also a culture and tourism grant request that we'll be putting in for that, we budget money for next year, we're asking other organizations for funds to help us get that done. So this is a temporary, it's an indoor maintenance construction trailer, it'll be there through the winter, so we'll have a place for people to go and then we'll look at building it. And it's not just a warming shack, it's going to be a year round building that we're planning on there. So if people want to have birthday parties, or get out of the sun or whatever when their kids are on the plane, it'll be something that's able to be used year round. So look for that to be delivered here in the next month or so. We are currently hiring a rink attendant for that position and we'll get them onboarded as soon as possible. Also, Community Center is moving along, as you're all aware, we have a $630,000 bonding allocation for this building. We do not have it in the bank yet because we have to have a budget and essentially be at shuttle ready for it, so we have a committee that's been working on that, also Godey sits on that, being part of the building committee. Ross, the Hollywood Works Director, myself, and the means of youth is also on that. Currently, we've looked at roof options, we are looking at switching to getting rid of the stucco siding and switching to a LP smart side is what it's called. And they've got a combination of lap siding where it's essentially just your lap, they come to the top of it, or some board and batten kind of styles in there. There'll be some color palettes that we're looking at doing. Colors, we're trying to base off of the Northern Lights theme, Northern Lights signs, like when we come in, so they'll match as best as LP can, you know, so we'll look at a color scheme for that. Part of that work scope so far would include two projectors in here, one of which will be going on tonight to get one installed here in the next week. We're going to look at removing this door, excuse me, put a double door in here and then a double door over there so we can get tables in and out much easier. We're looking at sheet rock being primed and painted and all the water spots that have been damaged in here, get all those fixed. We're looking at the kitchen, getting new cupboards in there, new paint and a power, professional power clean in there as well.
What's that door?
The back, the door on the back will be replaced, the hinges are, are the wood or whatever, we'll pay that back door up. Also the handicap bathrooms will be compliant with EDA capabilities, so we'll be doing that. You know, like I said, new sound system and all things of that nature. So there's a lot going on with that. The process, the process is moving along, in a couple of weeks we'll kind of have a budget. Once we get a budget, we can use that to apply to deed, to try and get those funds, and then we'll be looking to bid that in the winter for next year's construction. So we'll have a price, basically, we'll be able to see. Anything that's below that $630,000 will go the following year into parking lot, because we go through the parking lot with first avenue. That's what will take care of the curb, the curb, the curb access, the parking lot and things like that, so. We're hoping to not spend the whole $630 on this.
The LP siding option and so on, is that vertical or horizontal?
So it's horizontal lap siding.
Yeah.
And then, there's a, we haven't really dialed it down into if we want to use some board and batten is what it's called, or it's basically a board that's vertical and they've got those strips coming out. So LP's got some of that too. So they'll have a couple renderings for us to take a look at. But essentially, it's, it's a 30-year, they call it a lifetime warranty, but it's a 30 year paint warranty on it. So it's supposed to last 30 years on it, it should, should last us a good long time. It'll help us with the moisture problems because they'll put the moisture up into cold then, and it'll also be better insulated as well than cold walls. We'll upgrade the insulation, the moisture, we'll put actual barrier on there. And that's a problem that we're having with the stucco right now, a lot of that moisture is getting into the building. So it'll really take care of a lot of things, it'll be better insulation for heat, will take care of the moisture, oppression of the outside look, as well as, I guess, fixing that roof, taking care of all the leaks up there, we're going to do a different vent and style roof up there.
What about the HVAC system? HVAC?
That was done in April last year, so it's all, that's all brand new.
It's all done?
Yup, it's all done.
And that should improve the moisture problem too?
Yes.
It's balanced now for the intake and out exhaust?
Yeah, we're, before we were pressurizing, we were pushing air into the walls from the inside, but we also put in a dehumidifier as well too, so that kind of, so.
So will the building be closed then during the construction, will it be rented? Do you have any other?
That's a good question. We'll have to chat with them on that, I would imagine it will be closed for a good portion of it. We'll have to do some staging, you know, on things. Exterior work, probably not, probably work in, but if they're here, obviously painting and maybe kitchen will be closed or whatever, but for the most part, we'll have to shut it down. We can write that into the schedule, but it's got to be done in flexible days, you know, and we can actually...
Or at least picking the time.
We can pick the time, it's also closed too.
Right, so like if the 4th of July committee needs, you know, for the, you know, if you're working on some of those bigger events and that?
Yeah, we could, we could ask all the contractors how much time they would need and let's just say that they would like two months. And if our dead season is right now, you know, we could tell them, alright, we can have that at August 1st and all August, all September, October, and then we just... And I would imagine we'll have to have a ribbon cutting and grand opening, reopening ceremony. Another one. Another one. So there, and if there are any questions on the Community Center? Yes, no? Okay, tool pad is on the list for tonight. We cannot, we'll have to table that because we do not have the resolutions ready for that. They're going to be drafted up, and there's some specific language that has to be in there. Just a reminder, we have, we have a ton of funds that are designated for our salt shitter placement. And when you're using designated funds to fund something, you're going to pay, you're going to back pay those later. You have to have specific language that allows you to do that. So we don't have them prepared. It's not an urgency. I imagine that we'll probably have it by the next meeting. And then we can talk about that then. And the idea is, is we would purchase the new tool pad outright. And then we can take ours and put it on the state auction, and that one, we'd get probably 30 to 35, 40 maybe, if we're lucky. And then that would go back into that fund, and then equipment fund in 2026, we backfill the rest of that. So that's kind of the plan for that. That's our number one piece of equipment that we really got to be, we've stuck a considerable amount of money into it the last few years. It's a little bit of a waste, so we'll table that tonight. Any comments on that? Also, today there's the ordinance for elections, which would be grandfathering everybody's term an extra year to give us some E in here. We have a public hearing on that already. I think you guys are well versed on that. I just kind of wanted to remind you, that is on here, and that's what the ordinance is for.
Just wanted to, I asked Lindsay about this, but wanted to make sure everybody on the council got that cost analysis sheet, I assume, since the last meeting? Or not?
Yeah.
Yeah. For the, for the cost of holding and then the election.
So just for everybody here, Lindsay broke it, how much by giving this one?
Well, we always budget $10,000 for it on an op year, depending on what the costs are this last, the year. That we receive the cost on the three funds developed. But again, that doesn't involve any of our staff. That doesn't involve anybody from the community setting it up, going through the, and I don't believe that included the ads in the paper to test all this. Get it to ballot testing, get it, you know, there's just all of the stuff that's going on there too. So it's considerable amount of staff.
And that was just, that report was just our city portion of it, right?
Correct.
And the town had been using it also as an op year, but now they've already shifted even here?
They'll be doing the same too, so that's also something they know is, you know, I mean, look, if we keep using it, telling us on our election judge, they won't even have an election on the op anymore. So we're kind of doing the same with them in lockstep. So that's the election portion. We'll have a formal report later, but I just, since everybody's, it's on everyone's brain freshly. We did do smoke testing in town. That is concluded. I have not seen the actual report, but just from being in the field, every once in a while, talking to the gentleman, I believe there was at least two dozen smokes areas they found. It was like 30 or 35? It's closer to 30 or 35. So that's a lot. So there's good and bad with that. The good is that there's a lot of areas that we can fix and see some help right away. The bad is, is we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for it, what we'll have to do to fix it. So there'll be some discussion on that, and we won't do that until we actually get the report from them. We'll get an idea of what to, like, for funds to fix all of those. Lots of them are old abandoned trailer homes that they weren't capped correctly, you know. So a lot of them, Josh and I talked about the other day, we've got sanit, we've got storm sewer manholes, half lids on sanitary. So they've got holes in them. I'm talking a dozen of them sometimes, and water can just pour in anyway. So those are easy. You can just order up the lids, take the lids off, put the lids on. So some of that stuff, we'll be able to handle with a budget for anyway, and get after them. Some of them are very required, maybe digging down, you know, eight feet and capping off, something to hold the curb on. So it was, it was money well spent, I guess is what I could say for that. I don't know if you guys have any questions on the smokes. The library work, just to piggyback off of that, I just hope you remember, or remind you that the drain had backed up. The water had gotten into there, so there's extensive water damage in the ceiling. So we had to get multiple contractors. We had to get a roofing contractor, we had to get a sheet rock contractor, and we had to get an electrical contractor. There's plenty of building there. We really don't know the full extent of all of the damage in there until we get into it. So looking for mold, looking for, you know, health issues that are inside of it. We're also going to fix the drains. We're going to fix the roof and the roof flashing that's in there. A lot of this is reimbursable through insurance. Some of it is not. But we should have some lights that are in there and we'll get that taken care of. So that's kind of why we need the full three days, is it's going to take a day to rip everything out, a day to repair it, and then a day to put the sheet rock back on. Get it all looking nice and dressed right dressing. So it's kind of significant amount of work that seems to be happening.
Yeah, but it's.
It's needed.
Literally good to stop the leak, right?
Yeah, yeah. The books are, nobody can waste them or what, right?
So it's a silver lining on the big brain of it, and that we get to identify our problems here.
Yep. Last thing I'll touch on is, we are purchasing a trailer house in the southwest corner in Morningside there. I just wanted to remind you, because it's been in the works for both two months. The letter went out to the homeowners yesterday. They are, they are excited to sell the property to the city. We will demo it through the I triple R B program. Once we own it, we purchased it for, I believe, it was around $1,000, something like that. So they'll each, they'll get a check for a thousand bucks essentially from the city, and then we'll write the grant to the I triple R B. They'll go through that process, they'll demo it, and then we will put it, we will put it up for sale. We'll actually have a lot for sale that we could have water and sewer on it, somebody can build a house on. So that's a good little program that we use quite often. But when you see a check coming up for a thousand bucks going to people and you're aware of that, we'll be going through that.
Will we demo that this fall or will we do it elsewhere?
Um, it'll, it'll depend on how fast they turn, they turn the deeds around. So they have, the problem that we have is they don't live in town, they live in the state. One of the further complicated things, one of them lives in California, one of the owners lives in Texas. So we had to send two deeds out. They got to both sign them, send them back, then they got to get registered with the county. The county then has to approve them, which we both know sometimes takes a while. And then once it gets to us, and then we own it, then we have to go through the process of applying for the money and the funds being approved. Long story short is, they can demo it, so that's not a big, we probably can get it done. There's going to be a process, yeah. That's all I have for you. Unless you have any other questions?
Any other?
Only thing I've, I've thought today, well, more than today, about Luke's contracts coming to an end. And we have to figure out, are we going to have a committee, or are we going to do it all as a council to make an offer to him to extend his employment? I don't know.
That we have a kind of a labor or employee committee or not, that we?
You do have it, but I'm on it. We use the same committee.
No. So we could have, without public meeting notice, I mean, we can have two counselors.
You can.
On that, and who's on that now?
Oh, you, you about it.
Yeah. Okay. So I wonder who else kind of enlists, because the rest are the ladies. Unless, I think we brought in one of the.
Brought in Tim, Tim Sauer last time.
Yeah. And I think one year we even brought in a former city clerk in to help out, to Brit, you know, and she was helping out some things there. Well, how imminent is this? Do we need to make some kind of decision tonight on that?
Just talk to Wood.
All right, I think it's appropriate to get it on the radar screen.
Yeah.
Let's see, anybody else have any other matters?
Just two quick things. Just a couple of thanks. First to the Public Works, Al Hoddick and Huffer Dickinson. We're going to extend Pavilion moved, painted, and the green roof is on that now. So volunteers along with Public Works, Russ and his team did a great job of got that done yesterday. And then also a thank you to Kim Norman, Jeanne Paul Stern, Larry Drazler for cutting the cross-country ski trails. So they're all cut, so that they can grow and if we get sun.
Okay, well, welcome to your journey. Any updates for us?
Hi.
Okay, all right. So entertain a motion for your journey. Any questions?
I'll make them.
Move back, Councilor Hess, support, supportive of Councilor Hanson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To both. Stand adjourned for a few minutes. Cameron, who are ready? Okay, it appears to be 5:30, so I'll call the regular special meeting, or the regular meeting actually, of the ORC Council, Thursday, October 3rd, to order. And we have a roll call, please.
Jim?
Hanson?
Here.
Hess?
Here.
The closeage?
Here.
Gregor?
Here.
Gody?
Here.
All right, we have the full council present, and do we have a flag for the? Oh, we do.
By the legion's service, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Welcome all the citizens that are here. Counselor had been informed, we have citizens who want to speak on three separate issues. One being the street project, and also an issue on Holland, and also a point of sale inspection concern. So I'm just genuinely looking to the council. It, it strikes me that it might be considerate of us to deviate from our prepared agenda and proceed, well, two things, one, to enable the comments of two and three individuals actually, who wanted to speak on non-street related matters. And then actually proceed to a consideration of the 17.1 agenda item on the county state aid highway 100. Rather than going through the agenda as prepared. Any feelings about that, whether we should deviate from our agenda, or should we proceed with the agenda as it's?
Put agenda and put them on icon cap?
All right, so, all right, does that seem no opposition then? All right, so let's, let's proceed then with the agenda as proposed. The agenda item number four is the consent agenda, which is the portion of our business which is materials included in our for, our council packet, which we normally accept and being relatively non-controversial. And it adopt, adopt them in bulk unless some council member wants any one of the consent agenda items removed from the consent agenda. All right, seeing no one, then I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Councilor Hess, all supported, supportive of Councilor Gody. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. And if aye opposed, the consent agenda then is adopted. So then we're moving down to agenda item 10, which are appearances in public forum. And again, as I understand it from our W D clerks, sort of polling people as they came in here, that we have two matters separate and apart from the county state aid highway 100 matter. And I guess I invite them to approach the podium. First one maybe on the Holland Avenue, or if we, Deanna Green, if you wanted to speak.
Deanna, my name is Deanna Green. I'm just here to represent my tiny little community, which is separate from the big city stuff that's, that's going through with the new road. There is a concern in our neighborhood on Holland Drive because an advertisement for our local, some lots that are for sale. Read to the, to the following, sitting at the edge of town, there are beautiful lots available. Pick your building site, or plan to just tuck your camper away on it to use as your own camping spot, private camping spot. Power and city utilities are available to be stubbed in at, and it'll be mobile to local environment. Things like our lakes and our trails. So anytime you see someone advertising for your small little city, local community to be advertised as private camping spots, people who live there want to make sure that doesn't happen. I know that two of the lots have already been purchased, at least, because we see people on those lots. The one is, has, I'm assuming you're aware of the cities where, because there's already been a driveway put in, and a camper has been parked on that lot for over a year now, approximately a year. I think it went in last fall. I've never met this person. I don't know if, what their plans are. They might already have plans in the work to build something there. So I don't want to speak out of turn for that person. I haven't met them personally. I know they've been on that lot. I've seen campfires and stuff there. I don't know if they're sleeping in the camper at any time or not. I just am concerned about it. And the other lot is the one that's touching our property. When we first moved up here, I think the city owned those properties, because we were asked about whether we were interested in buying it when we moved up. I could be wrong on that, but at the time, they were, they were told that, I was told that the access to that last and final lot next to the railroad tracks there, you needed to have my property to reach it, because you couldn't put a driveway in because of where the city lift system, water system was. Those things could have changed, but I do know that someone has been parking in that corner and has started working on that back lot. So again, most of it is just to bring to the city's attention that that is how these lots were advertised. Hopefully, that's not how they're going to be used. And just to follow up, because obviously, I'm just, I'm a citizen who can't enforce any of the rules that we have, but just wanted to bring to you guys attention this.
Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I am assuming that the matter that may be direct to the city administrator's office or the planning consulting commission?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up. We'll follow up with it.
Perfect.
Thank you for bringing it up to our attention. Let's see, the second topic of conversation, I believe, are the Kings, I can't see, Sherry and John. Wondering if you wanted to explain the council, the situation you're posed with. I apologize for not getting back to you, because I had some information.
Well, my name is John King. I live at 103 West Second Avenue North in Aurora, just along from City Hall. I recently learned that if you want to sell your house, you have to separate your line from your neighbor. So connecting sewer line with your neighbor and you want to, your house to have a separate line. The sewer line is on my neighbor's property, so I would have to put in a new line to my house. This means excavating to the city sewer line in the middle of the street. The city says I am responsible for all costs for the project. I disagree. In most cities, the city is responsible for supplying a water and sewer service to your property. The contractor I have, I am having do this, told me that every city they have done this. And so far, the city has paid for their responsibility from the boulevard to the sewer to install a new system. I know that for a fact that I worked water and sewer for four or five years in the cities when I was younger, that all the lines we put in, we always put a service into the, to the, to the community homes, up to the boulevard, the sidewalk. Well, I'm supposed to replace the blacktop on the city street, the curbing on the edge of the street, and the sidewalk. Well, the sidewalk is busted up so bad, all the way down the street. The curb, you can't even tell that it's there in spots. It's all grass growing. And of course, the street's got a big crack in it right there by my house. So I don't know, I'm kind of at my wit's end here, wondering if I should do this or not. My neighbor doesn't want to do anything because the line's on his side. I would have to bear the cost for all of this. One of the major costs of the item is replacing blacktop, curb, and sidewalk. Well, if I replace that for $7,000 or whatever the mount is, five years, and now the city will come by and say, well, we're going to redo Second Avenue North. They'll tear it all out anyway, so I don't, I don't understand why I should have to replace it to look like new, and it's all old and deteriorated. like new, and it's all old and deteriorated. That's basically all I have, and I thank you for your time.
Alright, appreciate your explanation. We had a conversation separately, and then this information from the general information of the council, I did learn some facts about them, maybe we can discuss afterwards. I can't guarantee any relief here, but I assume we could at least have an explanation from the city administrator's office for our next, maybe our next council meeting as to what the applicable requirements are. One thing in particular I learned was that there's no immediacy to this unless you're proceeding or anticipating proceed to a sale of property.
Right.
And given your comments about that.
Well, I think I might read yourselves, I guess is what I'm seeing.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, you referred to the fact that that avenue is, or that street avenue is in sufficiently poor condition that it probably wouldn't be a worthy candidate for rebuilding in the near future, and we don't have a surplus of that, I don't know, city administrator's not on a capital?
It's not on our tenure plan right now, though.
It is, or is it?
It's not.
Oh, it's not, okay. Alright, well, at this point, I got a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hess?
Is that sewer line shared by you and your neighbor?
Yep. It's a six-inch plaza aisle that's in there now. We had to work on it about 50 years ago. There was a tree on this boulevard that the city didn't want to cut down, but when they started to dig, they broke my neighbor's water line. The shut offs were in this, the trunk of the tree, so they had to cut the tree down anyway.
It was a shared sewer line coming from the outer street, I think?
Yeah, so, his is, the main sewer line's on his property, going to the street. Ours is joined into that. So, I would have to put an all-new line in to separate.
Alright. Well, we'll proceed administratively to try to get some kind of a formal response back to you, but at this time, it's not on the agenda, and I don't think it'd be appropriate for us to take action. So, thank you though for sharing it, and for, you know, having us to reevaluate and have a particular situation to see how our policies play out, so.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, now, we have a number of citizens here, many of whom, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine have indicated they would like to address the city council. I assume these are all in regard to the county state aid Highway 100 plans? Is there anyone that intends or would like to speak to the council on matters other than the county state aid Highway 100? Alright, so, I guess with the indulgence of our decision of the council, I think it'd be appropriate, I'm going to suggest that we proceed to deviate from the prepared agenda, proceed to item 17.1, and start hearing from those citizens who want to address the council on that particular matter. City engineer and city administrator, would it be better to have the staff presentations, and then the?
I think we'd like to hear from them first, give them the three minutes, and?
Yeah, our rules of procedure are that unless the council makes otherwise, we limit speakers to three minutes. In each case, obviously, for the record that's being made, have you identified by name and your address? I personally are just, I think we're at a point on this project and process where we've had a number of public meetings, the city administrator could recite and remind us of those. I am thoroughly convinced that the counselors have heard a lot of the specific points of concern in the preliminary project plans. I'm hoping either on each issue as it relates to some of the features, maybe there could be someone who could be a spokesperson essentially. I don't know that the process of deciding on this is going to be advanced by 10 people coming up and saying the same thing. I appreciate each of you having your opinions, and I sort of invite you to be respectful of the others that are here also, and try to maybe remind the council members of the concerns you have, but we're well aware of a number of them, particularly in relationship to the proposed mini roundabout. I think we probably had less input on some of the other elements of the proposed project, but with that in mind, I guess I'll just ask you to be respectful and try to make sure that we already have all these measures under consideration. So, Mr. Seidler, I believe you're the first on our list, if you want to address the council for keeping in mind the three minutes?
Sure. Butch Seidler, 430 West Seventh Avenue North, and I, you guys know how I feel about the roundabout. And I kind of thought that the counselors, because all I think I'm saying, remember, you're representing the citizens of Aurora, and I think you should could take, and take the consideration of those surveys. And I wonder how much Mr. Ludden influenced you people for pushing that roundabout? Because I know Mr. Ludden wants it, but we live in Aurora, and I've totally against a roundabout. Why can't you leave the stop signs, put red flag lights around the stops, the stop signs? And my other one that I, is just me, is that Main Street is so safe now, and you guys want to extend the sidewalks? Jeez, it's nice, the way it is, it's so safe. I mean, I haven't heard one person say, "Let's extend the sidewalks," or the roundabout. I love the roundabout, honest, but you know, this is just my opinion, and you're not going to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman? Pete Gorman, I'm sorry.
Yep. Peter Gorman, I live 110 West Second Avenue North, and I also am not in favor of changing our street or that roundabout. When that was first brought up, a fellow made a statement, "Which would you rather have, blood on the street or traffic moving?" Well, if you put two cars up there, there probably isn't more than 25 or 30 feet between them. They would have to put their foot feet to the floor to bring blood on the street, because you can't get going that fast, not even two of you if you leap together, to smash up bad enough to have blood all over the street. And that was the statement that was made. And as Butch said, our street, I feel it also, is one of the safest streets around. You can get out of your car, open your door, people can put their walker out, do whatever, and not have to worry about traffic hitting them. But when you narrow that down, you change that. And Aurora likes their Fourth of July parade, and you know when they throw their candy out, them kids running out there, well, right now, they got some room. Well, you narrow that street, and that goes away. So, you're gonna, I feel you're going to be endangering people. And like Butch says, them flashing stoplights, you can go out here to embarrass. And you see that sign a long ways ahead, same thing with Highway 4, down by that cafe down there at the end of Highway 4, you can see that stop sign a long ways back, and I think that's a real safe route. And as far as these tables out here, you can look by Rudy's, I don't know about this one, but by the Legion, and there's cans there for cigarette butts. Where do you find the cigarettes? All around the ground, by the table. We had to have, tell them at the Legion, because there was Al-Had Nick and his wife, and a bunch of ladies from town painted that Legion. Well, right away, people still taking their cigarettes and putting them out on the wall. So, we put out a statement that if they get caught doing that, they would be kicked out of the club forever. And that kind of lessened it up, but there's still a little cup of black marks on there, so. And then, when I went to breakfast the other day, that table by Rudy's, there was half-full beer cans on there, glasses, on the table, a mess, cigarettes galore. They can't hit that can to put the butts in, and you're going to have the same thing. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your comments. I would see, Norma Jean Joffe?
Can I let Mike go first? I'm ready, no.
She's still ready? Alright.
I'm Mike Jofes, 505 South Third Street West, I've been a resident here since 1991. As far as this roundabout, I'm a retired state trooper, I have 33 years on, the roundabouts are safe. It moves traffic very efficiently, effectively, reduces the amount of crashes, even though there hasn't been a very high crash rate at this roundabout place, it does reduce the major injury crashes, if we were to have any here. The narrower street also would slow the traffic down. The wider streets, you're going to have, the people tend to drive faster when the streets are wider. When you narrow it down, people pay attention, they slow down. As far as the four-way stop up here, people don't really stop there. They slow down, they maybe shift a gear, and they go through. I witnessed it when I was working, I witnessed it now. The roundabout would be a safer alternative to what there is there now. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment, Mike?
Yes.
You know, just today, I went to Hibbey, and that roundabout there, the people coming from the Walmart direction, I sat over here while 10 cars went through, and you know, you're supposed to take turns on them, but they won't let you in, they just keep coming and coming, so you sit there, by the time I got to go, there was five cars sitting there behind me. So, that stops you.
The roundabouts are a learning.
Keep things moving here, let's, Norma Jean, you want to address this?
Pardon me?
Welcome back, former mayor.
Thank you. So, I will try to talk really loud, but, so, my name is Norma Jean Jofes, former counselor of the city of Aurora. I live at 505 South Third Street West. I also am a business owner in the city of Aurora. I own the Old Moose Building, which is now called Devosia Plaza. I also own Rogers Online, so I own a lot of business front on the streets, main streets of Aurora. I am in favor of the wider streets. I'm not asking to have them to go, like, so it's just, you can't, I want the wider streets, but I don't want them to go as far as Pete is indicating that they will go. Right now, you can double park on the streets, so, I mean, the UPS truck can pull up right alongside of a car parked on our street and still have space. So, wider sidewalks are a good thing, in my opinion. As far as the roundabout, when I used to work at the building on the corner, people never stopped on that sidewalk. I personally feel that by having a roundabout, it's going to be, people are going to be more aware, they're going to be paying attention a little bit more, because when I used to sit in that office on the corner, people were always texting. They were never stopping at the corner. Now, if you have a roundabout, with, people are going to be paying attention a little bit more, because they know that they have to go with the flow of traffic. That's just my opinion. And I, again, I would like to see the wider, not the streets, the wider sidewalks in the city of Aurora, because I really feel that it would slow traffic down. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
How much wider?
I'm not talking like a full car width wider, but I'd like to see them wide enough that we could have outside dining, we could have, we could have more people on the sidewalks. And in my opinion, we have engineers in town that are doing their job, and I trust Bolton and Mink, and I trust, they would say to us, "No, this is not going to work." Anybody who knows me knows that I'm not a big engineer fan, and they'll tell you that, but I do, they've earned my trust, and I truly believe that if they said it wouldn't work, they would tell us. I mean, I really, and they're telling us it's going to work, I believe that it will work.
I think the engineers will specifically address that in terms of the proposed preliminary...
So, it's not just the St. Louis County engineers that are saying it, in my opinion, it's the, the city engineers that are saying it. So, if they're telling me it's safe, I'm going to trust them and let them do their job, and believe that it's going to be safe for us. So, thank you.
Perry, is it Pachek? Pachek? I might be, I'm pronouncing it.
Pachek. So, I live out in Palo on Road 47, but I do frequent this town very often, I support your businesses, et cetera. As far as I'm concerned, this roundabout, and the gentleman from the county was telling us how nice it was down in St. Charles, I went to St. Charles about a month ago. All the signs around those roundabouts are bent, twisted, some are gone. The semis are not able to go around these roundabouts, not these little ones, what you want to put in here. So, we have semi-traffic, it's like a 50-foot trailer coming in for Circle K twice a week. We've got them coming in for Lucky Seven, two, three times a week. They are not going to make that corner, they have to go over the center in order to be able to try and make the corner, and they're still hitting the signs on the side. As far as these sidewalks go, when we moved here, the first thing that I really loved about this town was the width of the parking. You could get out of your vehicle, you didn't have to worry about somebody hitting you, getting your doors ripped off, no, they narrowed by WABIC, and now you have to watch it. You want to get out of your car, you got to watch and make sure that there's no traffic coming that's going to rip your doors off. And if you aren't parked right on the curb, you're going to get your door gone. And as far as a bridge goes up here, this is Minnesota, and we've got an older population. They're not all that great at driving on icy roads, you're going to put in a bridge, which is going to create a slippery situation for this population to drive in on. And listening to members of your community, members of Palo, members of Babbitt, the people don't want this, all we are asking for is please repave the road, it's rougher than a cob, but we don't need all these extra things. Our community is too small to need these, and it's also too small to afford to pay for this. Our taxes are high enough, and you are going to hit us up to help pay for this, am I not correct?
No, I think we can address that in the staff presentation, but just offhand things.
Even on his report, his report, when I was here in August, all the surveys, there was only one question that actually got approval. Some of them were 50/50, and most of them, everybody was saying, "No, we don't want this." That's us, and you're our elected officials, you're supposed to go with what the people want, not with what you want.
Just the one comment back on tax, it's not anticipated that any locally property tax-generated monies will be used unless at some point, so I, I think it's all financed by outside sources.
It's still our tax dollars. It's still our tax dollars. The outside sources are our tax dollars.
City administrator, they'll talk about the funding of ours, okay? All right, thanks for those concerns. And Steve, I assume he's some associate of yours or a family member?
No, I'm not.
Okay, Steve. Thank you. Cheryl?
Cheryl Whitten. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Cheryl Whitten. I've lived in Aurora for twenty-six years at seven-two-five Arrowhead. More than half the citizens of Aurora have told you they are against this roundabout. Aside from simply not having the traffic volume to warrant a roundabout, we have told you repeatedly, we do not want a roundabout in our town. This isn't about what you personally think or what you personally want. You are elected officials who would assume to be the voices for our community. You've been shown statistics from a man whose plan it was from the beginning to put a roundabout in our town. There are many other statistics that show the dangers of roundabouts, specifically with crosswalks. Specifically with crosswalks. And why they are simply not warranted, our town does not want or need a roundabout. As I've been reminded, you don't make decisions for the community needing our permission or approval. However, when you don't listen to the public you are supposed to represent, it sends the message that shady and dishonest business is taking place. There is no transparency with this council. Just saying that word doesn't make it true. We do not feel represented and I wanna go on record as one person who stood up and said, we don't want this roundabout, it's not a wise decision. If you approve this roundabout, it'll be made very clear to the citizens of Aurora that you completely disregard what we have to say. We were told we had input. If we don't stop giving us the illusion that what we say matters, just be honest and say that you don't care what we think. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Thanks.
Girl, I got one question, what are you doing in Aurora?
Pardon? I'm on Arrowhead.
Thank you for those remarks, let's see, Shane Saffey?
I, no, thank you, I think it's already been covered.
You think so?
The comments been covered, thank you.
I think that concludes everybody that was assigned up to speak today. So with those remarks in place again. I think I was asking the councils and delegates so we could just proceed to the fuller consideration of seventeen point one. And the staff presentations we did too, is there any objection to doing that? All right, seeing none, then city administrator, could you kind of indicate? I think both the county engineer, the city engineer and the city administrator are each wanna address different aspects of the whole plan.
You have Vic, do you wanna start with that or?
I guess, would you want me to cover the questions?
Sure.
Funding or?
I mean, all of it.
All of it, okay. All right, Phil, thank you city council members and mayor. So, I just wrote down some items here that I heard at the podium. The first question was about the flashing stop signs. And we do have those around the county. They're a rare installation. And the reason they're rare is because the best evidence that we have, we're not sure they work. We're not sure that they work. There was a study performed by the University of Minnesota, this is approximately ten or so years ago. It was completed by the local road research board in Minnesota. And it was a modeling research basis or approach. Or they modeled the effectiveness based on driver behavior inputs. Their estimate on the safety effectiveness of flashing stop signs is between one and eighty percent. What that means is they don't, okay? The, the one thing I would say about flashing stop signs is they are there to provide conspicuity for the intersection, but they don't assist in terms of finding an appropriate gap. So, the best I can say is, we're not seeing necessarily any benefits from flashing stop signs. But I, I will mention this, at the always stop at Rice Lake Road and Martin Road down in the City of Rice Lake. I, I heard that mentioned, that stop sign down there. We continue to have crashes at that intersection after the installation of those flashing stop signs from over ten years ago. Those flashing stop signs have been in place for probably closer to fifteen years now. We continue to have serious crashes. I continue to receive reports of drivers going through the stop sign, even though it's flashing. So, I just, we're just not sure that would be a solution that would be helpful here. Other items here. Regarding the sidewalk, so the proposal for the preliminary layout. The existing cross-section of Main Street is that we have two eighteen-feet-wide parking lanes and two ten-foot-wide sidewalks and then two twelve-foot driving lanes. So the proposal would be to narrow the parking lanes by eight feet. It could be reduced to six feet to, between six or eight feet. If they were, if the parking lanes were narrowed by eight feet, it would maintain, provide, it would still provide ten feet of parking space, our parking lane width, which is very generous. Would actually accommodate a vehicle's door fully open. We've confirmed that. The sidewalk could be reduced to six feet. I'm sorry, expanded by six feet, right? So that would leave two twelve-foot parking lanes. So the key about the preliminary layout is the design details haven't been finalized yet. The concept would be to widen the sidewalks, that's the concept. Let's look at some other items here.
So, you're saying any approval we might give to this wouldn't mean that if it was either eight feet or six feet, that would be left to a design?
Yes, yes.
Just to clarify.
Yep.
We would still have project management team meetings throughout the design.
Yes.
To figure that part out.
Yes, so thank you for that, Luke. The project management team that we have set up already with the city and county representation. That's gonna, our intention is for that to continue throughout the entire design process. So all the design decisions will be a part of that PMT. There will be no design decisions that are made in a vacuum by the county. Or the city's just, it's a partnership project, so therefore, we need to have a partnership PMT on that. Okay, so I heard about the signs at the mini roundabouts in St. James that are being bent, apparently. So a couple thoughts, this intersection, if you look at the footprint of the intersection here, Main Street and Third Avenue North. If you look at the total area, the total area would be the same before or as is or under a mini roundabout situation. So we're not, the intersection footprint would not be reduced. So for trucks, they would still have the same space available to them. To complete your attorney movement, we regularly see traffic signals hit at intersections. That's a common occurrence. That doesn't mean we remove the signal, but we regularly see traffic signals hit at intersections. We regularly see stop signs hit and destroyed in our intersections. That's just a common occurrence, that's why we have a sign group.
On that, I got the impression that the St. James experience was somehow there were signs within the mini roundabout? Or what?
Not the St. James roundabout, the signs would be on the sidewalk only. There'd be no signs in the median and there'd be no signs in the center of the intersection.
So there's nothing within the roundabout?
So between the curve lines, there'd be no signs, between the curve lines. There'd be signs on the sidewalks, but there would be no signs within the curve lines.
And, and the intent with trucks is that they actually would drive over?
Yes. That is an intentional design for the mini roundabouts, for the trucks to use that center island. And then just two other comments that I heard here, actually, yeah, two other comments was the traffic volume does not warrant a roundabout. It's a, it's an interesting comment. We don't actually have warrants for roundabouts. We do have warrants for traffic signals, but we don't have warrants for roundabouts. Roundabouts or the decision to install them, whether they be a mini or a traditional roundabout, is really based on more comprehensive data like safety performance, traffic operations, pedestrian needs, traffic humming needs, that kind of stuff, right? So there isn't any necessarily like volume warrants, like you'd see in a traffic signal, to actually determine if it's justified to install.
The term warrants, maybe for the benefit of the audience and some of us that aren't in traffic management, what are warrants?
So a warrant, yeah, thank you, Mayor. A warrant is actually prescribed by the MUTCD. A warrant is a threshold that you would have to meet either through the volume or through the number of crashes, that you'd have to meet a certain threshold to exceed that, to check the box for a particular warrant. So for example, there's eleven different warrants that usually used to be for a traffic signal. But typically, the first four is what we look at for the volume warrants. Yeah, so different volume warrants, one looks at a peak hour, one looks at a four hour, one looks at an eight hour, one looks at the corridor, you know, those sorts of things. I'm sorry, the manual uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD. And then the last item I just wanted to mention too is regarding the funding. And I'll end with this and I'll be happy to answer any other questions. So the funding for the project, there is three million dollars that was set aside by the state legislature in the 2023 session. So that funding is already dedicated for the project. So it's, it's just there, it's for the city and it's for the county. Normally, normally, a project like this would be funded by state aid dollars, county, state aid dollars, okay? But in this case, the, the community of Aurora got a bonus, which is rare, we don't often see this, of a three-million-dollar bonus of additional funds for the project, okay? If it weren't for this funding, the city would then have to find its own funding source for its utility work. So this funding can, is eligible for the city's utility work. In terms of the roadway cost, whatever is left over beyond the utility work for the city, we would then suggest to put that towards the roadway. So then the city would be whole, in a sense, for its utility work. And then if there's any leftover, we would apply that leftover to the roadway cost. And then the remainder of the roadway cost would be state aid dollars. State aid dollars come from three sources in the state of Minnesota. The first source is your gas tax. So if you look at your fuel pump, when you go to the fuel pump, there's two, there's two taxes. There's the federal gas tax and there's the state gas tax. Federal is about eighteen and something cents per gallon, the state is about twenty-four some cents per gallon. The second source is the tax on auto parts. So when you buy a part or you have your car fixed, there's a sales tax that's specific to auto parts. And then the third source is your vehicle registration fee. So when you renew your license for your car, that goes in the fund as well. So those three sources generate about, about three billion with a B dollars per year in the state of Minnesota. About sixty percent of that fund, and it's constitutionally dedicated, by the way. Minnesota is one of the rare states like that. About sixty percent of the funds go to MnDOT. Forty percent of the funds go to counties and state aid cities. So cities that have a population of five thousand or greater. Of the forty percent, counties get about eighty percent and the cities that are state aid get about twenty percent. So the funds then, that would be utilized for this project, as with all the other state aid routes that the county administers across the board, are paid for by the residents of the state of Minnesota through those three sources.
Counselors, any questions, Vic?
I have two questions on the bridge. So, one of the rumors I've heard, and Vic, you can either say it's true or not, I don't know. That the railroad is gonna be paying for the bridge or some part of the, part of the bridge, is that true or not true? I thought we're getting it ten million dollars if we get it from a federal grant.
Yep, so the CN has the option of paying up to five percent of the cost for the project. The way we've prepared the application, it does not have CN Railroad funding. But if we're awarded the funding, we're requesting, it's about seven million dollars into six and change. So close to seven million dollars, so we're requesting federal funding. The remainder would be covered by the county, so our state aid dollars. If we're awarded, we will be having a discussion with the CN Railroad on their ability to participate on the cost. I mean, we would like to see that, but it's not necessary for the project to move forward.
Thanks for giving us that feedback. And then, if we put the bridge in, is there, are there any, have there been any studies that, that bridge over by Gilbert, you know, where the track goes under? Sometimes it gets icy in the winter because the pellets are raining here and that sort of thing. Is there been any studies as far as safety of that? Or do you see with this bridge and the, you know, these pellet trains coming through, that it's gonna cause excessive, not excessive, but you know, more icing than on a normal bridge?
We don't know if it would be more or not. But what we do know is in terms of what, how we treat the surface in the winter time. So the concrete's paving on a bridge is scarified to provide enhanced friction, number one. And number two, we put a lot more chemical application on a bridge deck than we do on the roadway. So if you look at the design of the bridge and all the rebar that's in it, it's all epoxy coated because it's intended for the, it's expected that the highway department is gonna be putting a lot more salt concentration on that deck than any other portion of roadway. So we handle bridges just like all the other six hundred bridges. We, if, if necessary, we apply additional chemical treatment.
Is that at the discretion of the driver then?
What's that?
Is that at the discretion of the driver?
It typically is, the, the snowfall drivers typically know where to put the additional treatment and they typically do, if, if it's an issue that we're aware of, they will apply extra for bridge decks.
Thank you, counselor. Other questions right now? Vic? Okay, let's see, between the group? Oh, yes?
This gentleman was able to rebut all of our questions or opinions. The one thing that nobody has addressed, including him, is what the public wants. He does not live here. You live here, we live here, we drive for students. And I would like this lady, counsel, at this time, to ask her, show hands on who is for and who is against this project.
So I appreciate the comments, but we have, we have an order on the agenda and so on. We do have a proposed resolution, which may become the basis for a decision by the council. But if we could hear out the city engineer and the city administrator first on some things, I think we'll anticipate that each counselor will take a position on this.
So I'll piggyback off of that, actually, because that, that's a good point. So how do we get to the role plat? And we're talking about the plot role that's been displayed at the library. And essentially, that's who you were voting on today, is, is the resolution to support that. Now, it's not, again, like we've talked about, it's not exact design parameters, but it's concepts. It's a roundabout concept, extended sidewalk concept, it's a hybrid, Third Avenue parking concept, medians, walking trail on South Main, so there's some concepts that are in there. And how do we get, get to that? So there's, there's a whole toolbox the project management team has considered. When we talk about the project management team, it's the mayor, Richard Hess, myself, county, county staff, our city engineer. There's multiple people in the project management team that have been meeting. We've had a public meeting, one, we've had a survey, one, we've had a public meeting, two, we've had a survey, two. We've had a project management team meeting, we've had a public workshop, council workshop. We had another project management team, we had a second workshop meeting. And in all of this, there's multiple things that the project management team has been considering. The surveys have been looked at, I think there was three hundred and some responses in the survey. But in addition to that, in the toolbox that we've been looking at, there was a speed study. There was a parking study, there was an intersection control evaluation study, ice study for the roundabout area, which did recommend the roundabout. There was a stop sign compliance study. So there is, there was lots of things that went into that. And some things that the public had commented on, the project management team did put in. For example, Erie Street. For example, Erie Street, there was not, there was not an enhanced crossing there for anybody. There wasn't even a thought of one. And the public had asked, hey, we want to get the stopping trail from Erie, that's a high traffic area. So we put that in. There was also, on Third Avenue, there was no parking. We have narrowed it for the speed because the speed study had said, you know, we want to, people are feeling not going safe. So we narrowed it down. The public said, no, we want parking on Third Avenue. So we added parking, hybrid model on that Third Avenue. There's some other things that might be missing on that too, Vic? The angled parking, the angled parking was a clear, clear no. I mean, we heard that nobody wanted any backend parking or angled parking at any time. So we kept it parallel parking. So the public does have some DNA in this as well. But so does, so does the stop sign study, so does the parking study, so does an ice control evaluation. So there's other things the project management team looked at as well as the public opinion. I guess the other thing I would say is, out of, out of all of the four surveys, the roundabout had the least amount of discrepancy from yes to no. The other ones were actually great. So I know everyone's focusing on the roundabout, but if we're focusing on that, then the whole thing should be thrown out of the tree, or just on public study. So there's people who are for, there's people who are against it. We've had comments for and against it. I guess I'll, I'll just say that. I wanted to highlight on the project management team, the meetings we've had, how we've got here, I guess, I'd like you to know that when you vote on this, it isn't all or, or nothing. It's, you can't approve concepts because they don't have to flow together. So if it failed, then the project management team would have to go back and review all of the concepts that were together and present it again. Additionally, it is the plot role of the library that we're approving tonight. That was, that's what's on the docket, that's the resolution. I would do a little call roll, I recommend a little call roll for you all. We were initially going to table this because we felt that we should have all five counselors here, or, you know, full, full mayor and council. But Counselor Doughty was able to make it, so he can, if you'd like, vote on it tonight instead. And I guess with that, I'll leave it to Josh. Do you have any comments as well?
Yeah, the only other comment, when Vic was talking funding, there's the additional $600,000 from the state as well to help cover some downtown street improvements, whether it's the building facades or landscape, streets, gates as well. So just making sure we're including that. That's an additional funding bucket to help cover some of those additional expenses. So I do feel like Vic is, is true in that this is going to have a very low, likely zero cost for the city from the city tax levy.
One question I have, Vic. There was, you know, concern expressed in some, one of the public forums anyway, about the plans for pedestrian traffic at, associated with a roundabout. And concerns that it might be less safe for pedestrians. I wonder if you can comment on design features and experience?
Yep, so thank you, Mayor. So I'll just go, go right into it. The safest intersection that we are aware of, that we know of as engineers in Minnesota, this is based on empirical data, so it's based on the actual crash data, the safest intersection we know for pedestrians is a roundabout. Compared to an always stop, compared to a traffic signal. It's a, the estimate is 60% reduction, was the study that MINDOT performed. So MINDOT's report says 60% reduction in crashes involving pedestrians at roundabouts versus signalized intersections or always stop intersections. And the reason for that is if you look at the features of a roundabout compared to the other two types, so take an always stop or a signal, we are expecting the driver, when they come to the stop line, to look for other conflicting vehicles. If, under the case of a signal, they have to look at the indications of the signal. They also have pedestrians crossing in front of them. So it's all happening at once, okay? Whereas if you look at a roundabout, the pedestrian crossing, you know, is about, is pulled back between 20 and 30 feet before the yield line to enter the roundabout. So what that, what says, I can't talk. What that is doing is it's separating the decision point for the driver that's approaching the roundabout. So they, as they're approaching, the first decision point is, is there a pedestrian crossing? If there is, first aid call, the driver has to yield. The second decision point, to get to the yield line, are, is there a conflicting vehicle to my left? That's it. If you look at the total decision points of an always stop or a traffic signal, they're actually longer. So you have more decision points for the driver is expected to, or has to, not expected, the driver has to make much more decision points for a round, for a signal or an always stop versus a roundabout. And so that's why we're seeing this significant reduction in crashes involving pedestrians at roundabouts, because we're taking so many of the conflicting decisions away from the driver and, and breaking them up in time.
Is not the valet safe for pedestrian? Every roundabout I've been in, pedestrian walks up, I'm ready to keep going. If you stop with a pedestrian, I'm going to ask for an emergency vehicle. I see that many guys.
All right. Let's see, trying to think of somebody. We had a public comment time earlier, but someone have a short question there? Yes, sir?
Yeah, you know, they would just mention here that a truck driver could just drive over the roundabout. I don't think you're going to find a truck driver that wants to do that. Now, I spent considerable time in the woods when I was younger. And when we made our logging roads, them loggers made sure you didn't have a tree that was close that had a ruck out. Because when in the wintertime, when it gets really cold, when they drive over that ruck, it would break the cords in their tires. And then, as Mike said, he's witness, people don't stop. There is a certain amount of people don't want to stop. And it don't matter if you put a red light up there, stop and go, they're not going to stop. The only thing that'll guarantee anybody stopping is an officer sitting close by.
Maybe, what I think most everybody's heard it, but the actual traffic stop study that the county performed, I believe you explained one time the methodology that was, that you videotaped for a 24-hour period and then had a data analyst to watch for what the compliance rate was on the stops there, right?
Yep, I can answer that question. So the county completed a stop sign compliance study. So we classified vehicle maneuvers in three buckets. The first bucket is a full stop. The second bucket is a rolling stop, that would be estimated to be 1 to 5 miles per hour. The third bucket would be a roll through, which would be estimated to be greater than 5 miles per hour. So when we did the turn movement count in October of '23, we had 12 hours of video that was collected for the turn movement count. But because we had the video, we could then have somebody sit down and actually watch the video, which they did. They watched all 12 hours and they classified every single vehicle that entered the intersection into one of those three buckets. If you summarize, or if you add up the rolling stop and the roll throughs, which are illegal maneuvers, that accounts to 52 to 63% in that range, it bounces around that range throughout the entire day. So there isn't one hour where there's less than 52% of vehicles that are violating the stop sign per day, okay? So what that suggests to us is that the mini roundabout would be quite favorable in the sense of now the vehicles don't, are actually encouraged to yield because, think about it from a practical standpoint, there aren't very many conflicting vehicles at any one minute. So if you're approaching the intersection, the probability of you seeing another conflicting vehicle at the same moment, very few, all right? So in, in reality, it makes sense for drivers to be able to have the opportunity to say, I can just roll right through the intersection. It makes sense because there's so few conflicting vehicles in the intersection. So that's why the mini roundabout seems to really shine, is it seems to match the driver behavior that exists already at the intersection.
And to piggyback on that, I have a lot of experience with trucking. I come from a trucking family. Roundabouts, so, so truckers don't like slowing down for roundabouts. So Highway 37 going to Hibbing, truckers hate that roundabout, right? Because you have to slow down, speed up. Truckers also hate coming to a complete stop. So here, a four-way stop, as a truck driver, like, I want to roll it because I want to keep my momentum going. And so a yield sign with a roundabout is going to support that. They have to slow down and speed up. So that's, that's a fact, right? But if they can eliminate that stop, they're, they're more efficient, they're saving fuel, right? They're not having to make a complete stop. And so as a trucker, generally, they're maybe apprehensive at first. I think they'll enjoy the roundabout in this city.
Excuse me, sir. Can I ask on round? Isn't the, aren't so much supposed to have the right of way on roundabouts in this state?
No, the, the, the right of way for a roundabout is, if you are approaching the roundabout and there's no vehicle to your left, you can enter the roundabout. But that means all the vehicles in the circulatory lane have the right of way, regardless if you're a trucker or a passenger car. So whoever's in the circulatory lane has the right of way.
Other question, Counselor, or that?
Only question, I got a question, but when we do Main Street, we're going to go back to the alleys with the creek, right? So everything off the Main Street, like on Third Avenue by the lead, and everything will be new right back to the alley, right?
Yeah, so we would construct everything new to at least, so like every time, everywhere there's an alley or a street on Casal 100, we would construct at least to the end of the radius, if not, if we have to go a little further. But we have to tie in to all the alleys and streets.
So we'd be back far enough, so if we did future streets, you wouldn't have to tear up that intersection?
No, no, we, we actually want to have at least 50 feet of reconstruction onto the side streets, exactly for that reason, because we don't want you or somebody else to have to come back into the main roadway. We'd rather keep it on new pavement.
The one other concern I heard expressed was that, notwithstanding this is a very low-profile mini roundabout, that it would be destroyed by the snowplow operators. What, has been the experience in that?
No, we have no expectation of that, any damage for the snowplow blades to the mini roundabout features, because they're all beveled. So all the, the splitter alleys and the center alley that's raised, it's all beveled. So the plow is actually intended to just ride up like this. We actually see a lot of damage at our curves on the corners of urban, urban street intersections, right? So what we have out there today, you'll probably notice, I haven't been out there to look, but my guess is that you're going to see occasional busted curve on the outside corners, because that's a more vertical face, right? So when they're following the layer, that's, that's just naturally what happens. But the features of the mini roundabout, they're intended to be beveled, so the plow blade rides right up.
If you think about like the fire hole here, where you've got the apron going up to it, there's a beveled curve that gets you up there, and when we plow off the street going into that, it's the same, would be the same concept.
And I would say too, that if there's damage, St. Louis County is stepping on their own foot, because it's our cost that has to maintain it. So if there's any, if damage does occur, which we're not expecting it to, you know, above, beyond this normal deterioration, it's, it's our cost, right? So regularly, we have our snowplow operators, which are very good, by the way, but they occasionally will break stuff, which is just the way it is. And that's not their fault, it's just, that's just the name of the business, and we get to pay for it.
I have a question for you. You were talking about our rolling stops. In the last 10 years, how many accidents have you had in that intersection?
I think the number is four.
Four in town, two in the intersection.
That did not include the one that happened April 2023, last year with the city truck. There was a T-bone there, it didn't go that far back, but we had our own city vehicle actually hit somewhere.
Pardon? We, we did look at 10 years of crash duty, yes. Yep.
And don't, I don't want to put you in an awkward position, but I have, I'm reliant in our project management team meetings and other things, and just the discussions we've had. This isn't your first Romeo. I'm wondering if it would be, I think there was some suggestion that everyone's opinions are essentially equal. And I guess in my own experience, I tend to, having been a professional and, and working with professionals, tend to attribute additional significance. What is your background as a, and experience as a highway engineer?
Like my personal background or?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Happy to answer that. So I'm the, I'm the traffic engineer for St. Louis County. I'm at, I've been at the county for a little over 17 years. Before the county, I was at graduate school at Iowa State University, where I got my master of science degree in civil engineering with an emphasis in transportation engineering. Before that, I was at Michigan Tech University, where I received my bachelor's science degree in civil engineering. I received my professional engineering license, which is required to be a practicing engineer in the state of Minnesota in 2010. And then in 2022, I received my professional traffic operations engineer certificate, which is an additional requirement above and beyond a professional engineering license. So to become a PTOE, you have to have a minimum of five years of verifiable experience as a traffic engineer with a PE, practicing as a PE. And then you have to pass a six-hour written examination with no study notes. So the PE examination is eight hours, the PTOE examination is six hours, and so are my credentials. But in terms of my professional experience in projects like this, we regularly have projects where there's, not always, but projects of significance, it's normal for there to be debate. We, we actually encourage it. We want to see the debate because we find that we get a better product at the end of the day. The thing that we have to be careful of though, is that no project is purely democratic. No highway project is purely democratic. What I mean by that is, whatever the people say, which means something, is not the only thing, right? Because at the end of the day, we have to have other considerations such as trucks, safety, pedestrians, all these other needs that go into it, right? And so a project, the best way to describe a project is it's the best balance amongst all the competing needs of the roadway, okay? And at the end of the day, we've never had a project where we had 100% agreement on. That's not possible, and that's totally fine, that there's nothing wrong with that. But I, I can say with confidence that I am very proud of, and I think we have a very good record, that very good projects that the county has completed in the last 15 to 20 years, or even longer than that. I have many, many stories I could share of all the different challenges that we've all experienced, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot so much as.
No, it's fine.
When we attribute some weight to comments people make, you know, and others.
I appreciate that.
So.
I have a little, by the way, comment with city engineers that are. I've lived here since 1972, and I personally can say I've never seen a satellite truck not stop at the stop there. Not to say it don't happen, I've just never seen it happen.
One would hope that a professional.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question? How about emergency vehicles such as a ladder truck?
How many what?
How about emergency vehicles such as a ladder truck?
I think she's asking, does the roundabout accommodate emergency vehicles? And yes, the answer is yes, and would.
And this is, is there any estimate of how many of these mini roundabouts are around the state or whatever?
The best estimate we have is there's at least 15, they're relatively newer. When I say newer, the last 15 years, we would consider newer. The, just for awareness, the county is constructing a mini roundabout in West Duluth in 2026, the same year as this project. We went through a very similar process with that project. It also started out with a very contentious, in terms of the roundabout question, but we got at a point where there seemed to be general consensus that started developing around that concept. So we are constructing a mini roundabout in 2026 in West Duluth, intersection of Grand Avenue and 40th Avenue West. The MINDOT is looking, considering a mini roundabout in Chisholm at the downtown intersection on Truck Highway 73 and Lake Avenue, which is the main intersection by the, by the police, now the old police station in Chisholm next to the library. Um, and then MINDA and the county are looking at it currently. We're just at the beginning of the process, uh, looking at a mini roundabout in the city of Ely at the intersection of Sheridan, which is Highway 169, and Central Avenue, which is County Highway 21. So it's the first signal that you can come to if you're coming in from Tower. So we're looking at a mini roundabout at that location. So, um, I expect to see, um, over the next 10 years, uh, an explosion in mini roundabout construction across the state.
Vic, have you ever seen a mini roundabout that was put in, taken out?
No.
Can you imagine putting a crossbow on a mini roundabout before, or are you like, you need to give for this?
Uh, you, yeah, the question is, is this the first one kind of for the?
Yeah, on a mini roundabout, put a crossbow right on the mini roundabout.
Yeah, no, you're not this.
It's going to pack up any mini roundabout.
Yeah, this is, this is not the first proposed mini roundabout in the state?
No, with the crossbow.
With the crossbow, no, we, uh, there's. Not St. Louis, St. Louis County has not completed one. Other counties have.
With a crossbow right on the roundabout?
Yes.
And do you have any safety statistics for that, too? Is that a professional mapping yet?
Do you have a estimate after that?
Uh, I would have to look. Um, we would, there there's a, there's a mini roundabout in Shakopee.
No, Shakopee, it's the war, 15,000 people.
Yeah.
If you're in a minute, you need to grab, it's going to be expensive. If you're on on the whole street, you won't be able to. That's going to be totally.
I think we've lost, I hope, ample time for everybody to make their points, particularly given the track record on this this whole matter. And appreciate, I, we're approaching a point where I think we turn to our, uh, agenda item, uh, which is a consideration of a resolution in our agenda item 17.1. Um, I just, I just want to comment, um, in in just general terms, as your mayor. All right. Um, I think it's an enormously good reflection on the community that we've had the degree of interest. I think it's a good reflection on our administrative team that, uh, so many opportunities for input have been provided. And I think it's fair to say that every one of you sitting in the audience and every one of us up here, uh, wants to make a decision, or a series of decisions really, that are in the best interests of this community in the long run. And.
Voting on the ballot.
Well. All right, so I'm just, I'm just trying to, uh, put some context on here. And, uh, government, I don't know of any government that functions by every decision being made by something on ballot, although we do live in a democracy, and sometimes that's the useful tool. But that's that's secondary. Just want to, again, emphasize two things. One, I think we're all in this room for the best interests of this great community. And, uh, secondly, that we are suitably aware, I think, of the fact that we're making decisions that your children's children will be living with, because this is a 40-year project.
And this is a loss of immunity.
All right, so just with both prefacing remarks, then, um, I guess we have a prepared.
We need a lot of debate happen on this. Now, you can say that civilians are people in the roundabout want it.
I appreciate that comments have been made, and I think everyone has heard the concerns of everybody in one form or another, and we're aware of this sort of things. Um, all right, so we have before us 17.1, a proposed prepared resolution, the the essence of which would, uh, indicate to the county that it would be giving the cities, uh, approval to proceed to the refinement of the designs uh, over the next, like, year and a half. About here, uh, in continued consultation with the city's project management team that the city administrator has described. So, um, and this would be in regard to the preliminary plan version that's been on display in the library and which has been discussed here today. So at this time, I entertain a motion to approve proposed resolution 2024-64.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-64 to approve. County State Highway 100, per my, sorry, it's on.
All right, and as the other member of the city's project management team that the city administrator referred to, uh, I also support the resolution and, uh, offer my, uh, second of that motion. So now, uh, we have an opportunity, uh, for discussion. Uh, the proposed motion, the city administrator, any comments other than what I've said about the resolution itself?
Um, I just want to just offer one more clarification point for the mayor and council. This again, um, sidewalk with, we will still figure all of that out, you know, the parking spaces on there, we'll still figure that out. There's still some 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 design things, but this is just a conceptual goal, and we'll continue to work towards that. But be sure that you are voting for the role that was at the library that you see.
I have just one more comment. How about four corners and a mirror? Why wasn't the roundabout put there? There's a lot of ashes there.
I appreciate. Adam, I appreciate those concerns, and I'm sure there are other concerns, and everybody could come up at various intersections. But, um, uh, in preparation, we have a a motion with support on the table. Uh, I don't have many powers as a mayor of what they call a weak mayor system, but I do have the ability to, uh, somewhat control some of the business that takes place in common by the council. So I'm going to exercise that to explain why I'm going to vote for this resolution. And I, in saying that, I want to point out, um, I'll, you're free to leave if you want to. All right.
It's not worth our time coming here, because you're going to put it in, mother.
He's showing how you're supposed to, what he's doing.
All right, yeah, all right. What I'm trying to say is, I think the survey was, the response to that was very helpful in focusing the attention of the community. On the other hand, I don't, this is not a referendum on it, and that was one of many tools that was employed in this process of getting to this point. And, uh, I initially was very, very moved when one of the citizens came up to me and said, "But all these people indicated that they were opposed to it on the survey." And I take that very, very seriously, because each and every one of our citizens are valuable. On the other hand, I get a survey that I have every reason to believe isn't, is, uh, an objective analysis of data, which says to me that out of 4,600 vehicles going through an intersection on that date, more than half of the people indicated with their brake pedals that they want to be able to go through that intersection without stopping. Uh, it's a regional resource. It's far more than just Aurora's residents. And I think people's actions oftentimes speak louder than their words. And I, I, as a former prosecutor, I'm extremely concerned when we create, tolerate, and essentially encourage people to not obey the law. I I think our society begins to break down. It's a minor thing to roll through a stop sign, and it, thank goodness, most people have exercised good judgment in doing that. But I, I just don't feel comfortable personally in keeping a situation where it's essentially contrary to the behavior of the people, and we have means available, tried means, to be able to avoid that particular situation. I have not heard, uh, any reliable data on dangers associated with the mini roundabout. Uh, it seems to me in every way it's either neutral or an improvement over what's been going on. And, uh, again, I'm acutely sensitive to the fact, I'm an old man. I'm not going to live to see out the life of this intersection or anything, but I do feel an acute obligation as a mayor to make decisions that are going to be valued and appropriate for the, uh, future generations of this city. And I cannot envision a situation in the years to come when someone would say, uh, gee, I'm glad that, uh, we passed up on that opportunity for a roundabout. I could see as they become more common, uh, more completely embedded by all the experience and stuff, that, uh, it's more likely that 20 years from now, where someone's going to say, "Why did we pass up the opportunity we had to put in a mini roundabout?" I guess, I I'm picturing people say, "Well, everybody's using good judgment running through it." Well, I am saying to the city administrator, 20 years from now, I wouldn't be at all surprised if there was a little camera sitting there that records every person's actions in the intersection, no police car around, and, um, tickets and citations would probably be issued. And the first thing would happen, immediately, people would start stopping. And then they'd say to themselves, "Why do we have to stop at this intersection? We could have a mini roundabout that lets it go." Um, this is not going to involve a lot of costs. So it involves a lot of personnel time for the city. Um, I think it's a great move. I think, uh, I'm I'm really optimistic. The traffic in this community through that intersection is not going to decrease. Uh, this is a community that's building and sustaining a strong vibrancy as a city. And I can only see, uh, with the addition of the new age copper and other things, that the traffic will will increase. I think we'll have more businesses. I'm I'm very confident of this community. So, um, when when we get to a vote, I, for all those reasons and many more, uh, and I, and I respect professional opinions. We have a city attorney who comes, and he doesn't just say, "Well, I got a hunch this is the way to go." He's trained in those things, and I respect and have valued over my lifetime relying upon trained professionals until they prove they're, uh, for some reason not reliant. So, uh, for all those reasons, uh, I'm going to be voting for it. So, um, let's see, should we go in senior? Well, I'm just wondering if other members want to speak about why they're, uh, what what's weighing on their minds, or would you rather just proceed to a vote?
No, I would like to make a comment. I I do, I think this is a, my look, the proposal on the sheet that's that's been out here and in the library, I think it's very good, most of it. I think in areas of town, they addressed safe pedestrian safety issues and did it very well where there was a problem. In areas of town where they had a speeding problem, that was addressed, and it's addressed very well in this proposal. The potential bridge over the railroad, I think, is a great idea that not only gives pedestrian and and auto traffic safety, but also snowmobiles and four-wheelers that'll be crossing. Downtown, I think a good compromise between what's been, what's here now, and and I think you can get a good compromise to give the business owners potential extra space if they choose to use it, and still provide safe, um, parking for the, for residents. The only thing I think has been missed from the beginning is the whole thing with the roundabout. I think from day one, now even tonight, we had three, uh, two to one against. I think it's been that way all the, all the way down the line. And I get the feeling, I've had the feeling all along that this is, that factor, even it hasn't been an overwhelming majority, too, of residents that just don't want it. Could they learn to live with it? Yes. Could we live without it? We already are. I guess I get, it's come down to a point for me, has it been worth all the animosity that's been created just by one intersection in town? So for that reason, I personally can't support the proposal as it's presented tonight.
Thank you, councilor. Others?
Yeah, my opinion, um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who's here, knows that have left, uh, everybody for sharing their input throughout the process. I appreciate the community also and and the other elected officials. Where I come down on is, I, you know, I I support most of this project, and I think the bridge is a good idea. I think extending the streets, uh, the sidewalks to six feet, not eight feet, is a good idea. And I know we're going to work through that, that sort of thing. Um, but similar to what the other councilor just said, we don't have a safety issue at that stop sign. We've had five incidents in 10 years. Um, the majority of the citizens don't want the roundabout, and they've expressed that through the survey at 284 to 90. Again, tonight, it was a small sample. Uh, there were five people that were against it, two that were for it. And then I also walked around town quite a bit in the last two, three months, just asking people, you know, "What do you think of the of the streets that we're looking to change?" And I've got to say, the vast majority of people said they didn't want the roundabout. So for that reason, uh, I also can't support this design, um, tonight.
I have.
I see where a roundabout would make the traffic flow. Uh, we've talked about safety. Well, I don't think the safety is as much a concern as getting cars to move through that intersection. We may not get the bridge. When, you know, when the railroad crossing arms come down in the morning, and there's school buses and cars lined up, they come up to that corner after the train is gone, and there can be 12 or 15 vehicles waiting to go through that intersection. Well, you see them stop, the front one stop, and when they move, the next four go after them without stopping. They they're treating it like a roundabout. It's just, it's not a safety thing. It's a flow of traffic. If you, if people got used to that, at first, I was, I didn't like roundabouts at first. Now I see that they do work. If you had that in there for a couple of years, and people got used to not stopping there, and you said, "Oh, we're going to tear it all and put stop signs back up," people would have a hissy fit. It it just makes sense. Why do, why do you want to stop at that? All it means is you just angle around it. It doesn't mean that anything else. I see semis come up there, they have to wait for all the cars to clear, to make the corner, or out of somebody's good graces, stop short and let them come around the corner. The roundabout fixes that.
Okay, I gather everybody's had an opportunity to, uh, provide some comments. Uh, and we have had a full hearing and airing of the issues. So this time, I'd call, call for a vote. Can we do voice, or should we do?
I'll do a roll call by.
A roll call, well, I'll say, no, okay.
Councillor Hess?
Yes.
Councillor Godey?
Yes.
Councillor McClosick?
No.
Councillor Hanson?
No.
Mayor Gregor?
Yes.
So that's a three to two vote, and, uh, the county, I assume, regards that as adequate instruction to proceed ahead. So, um, I hope that we will continue as we have our project management team and working with the county to regularly and effectively keep citizens advised of how those plans are progressing, and most importantly, how the funding for the bridge comes through. All right, I believe that takes care of our agenda item 17.1. What would I say?
You see him, the front car stopped, and the next four.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you.
Thank you. You, Bill.
All right, uh, let's see, returning back to our agenda. Let's see, uh, I think we're up to, we have our reports from staff members at our agenda planning session adequate there. Uh, we got our agenda item 14, the report from councillors. And, uh, let's see, hopefully, start with the council question.
Look covered as far as the warming shock that we're working on. I thanked everybody that did the volunteering work on the trails and shelters, so I've got nothing more to say. got nothing more to say.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Counselor Hanson?
Just another reminder, two more days of the book sale at the library, and also coming up next week, 9th through the 11th, the physical library will be closed to patrons, so.
Let's see, Counselor Godey?
I think I said what I wanted to about the roundabout, and that's all I'm going to say tonight.
Okay, well, I'm out of pure words. Counselor Hess?
The only thing I want to say, if you notice when you drive down the bank, forestry road, the zoot sign is gone, you can see when you come on the forestry road.
History is gone.
Thanks, Luke.
Looks good.
Real quick story on that, I did call Matt's house to ask, as a courtesy, do you guys want your son to go to your dad's store if they're interested in it? And he said, no, thank you. It's for my, they didn't do very well there, and he said send a building, we need to get it, so you got a contractor to get it.
Well, so that concludes your remarks, just elaborating on some of the community activities. First and foremost, we have on October 12th, pumpkin fest celebration in town, and for those that might be watching this on the tape version, certainly want to point out there will be ninja anywhere, axe throwing, the stage placements will be at the community center, poop trucks, kids games as usual, and the fire hall, cakewalk, costume contest, and adult pub crawl, for those that are interested in that. Let's see, in terms of area, and we've gone over pretty much what the water board or water project situation is. At the community advisory partners, one, some facts that came out that were interesting is the availability of childcare at the school now is pretty vibrant, and they are taking in kids 30 months of age and older. And the superintendent said that if they had a, they're able to handle the demand currently, and if there's more demand, they'll get more staff on board, which is a real important tool for us in economic development, to have the availability of that kind of facility. Let's see, there's going to be a new range copper open house on October 12, or 21st, from 2 to 7, and individuals will be able to go out to the plant site, see all the changes that are made there, and probably get some presentations on what they envision for the improvements going forward in the future. And then on the 24th of October, we're having our Al Haddini Community Award meeting, meals provided, and a good chance for everybody to both kind of create as a community. Representative Liz Legar is going to be giving the keynote address at that, and therefore probably reflecting on his years of experience in legislature, given the fact he's now retiring. So there are a lot of things going on in our city, and that's, I hope, some of the highlights anyway. Moving on to agenda item 16, old business, there is none. Moving on to 17, new business, 17.2, it's the proposed resolution 2024-65, adopting ordinance 106, and that particular ordinance has to do with the scheduling of municipal elections. City administrator, do you want to explain that to the record?
Yep, so again, we saw a voter turnout of about 300 people in the odd year election cycle, which is just for the city of Florida. That's the only thing we hold elections for, is our Aurora members here. The tone of white, and us deciding to move to even years with the presidential years, and do them all in one shot, it would save us considerable amount of staff time, it will save us some money. But in doing so, we would grace the current terms an extra year to get us on the even cycle. This is not something that's, it's not something new. My law did it, other communities have done it, there's precedent deciding on to do it. So it's just all around, less staff work, saves money, makes sense for everybody. We need more people for our elections.
So is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution 2024-65?
I'll make a motion. I'll support it.
Okay, it's a good move by Counselor Hess, supported by Counselor McClosick. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion is, or the resolution's adopted. Moving on to agenda item 17.3, proposed resolution 2024-66, addresses the establishment, oh, an address was established for West Desperal Park as another part of that ongoing project. Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
No, we adopt resolution 2024-66.
All right, is there support?
All support.
Movement's supported, Counselor Hanson made the motion, Counselor Godey supported it. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, Luke, this is the parcel where the spec building?
Eventually it will be, correct.
That'll be the address of the spec building.
It will be, yeah.
All right, just going back a moment, 17.2, we didn't have to vote separately on the ordinance inclusion in the pack, right? Just the resolution.
I believe common practice is for ordinances is to be by a roll call.
And so we should vote on that separately.
What's that?
This is on the changing over to the even year elections. We had a resolution to do so, and then there's a proposed ordinance included in the pack.
You just do a roll call vote on that?
We did a roll call vote on the resolution, and then should we have a vote then on the ordinance?
We can do a roll call.
Roll call. All right, so, and we don't need a, do we need a motion to?
Yeah, it was.
Let's have a motion to amend the ordinance number 106 pursuant to or consistent with the resolution we just adopted.
Look, yeah, go ahead, just, yeah, you gotta do, you gotta do a motion, ask. You did a motion.
We passed this.
So the two were, I missed it, it's my mistake on this, I missed the fact that there were two steps in this process, both the resolution, which we have adopted, and then the approval by roll call vote of the ordinance.
Yep.
Yeah, you got, you have to do a, you have to approve by, yeah, by, all right, separate. So give this discussion, we had a motion to approve the proposed ordinance change. Would someone do that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance change.
All right, and support? Supported by Counselor Hess, made by Counselor McClosick. Any further discussion on that? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Hess?
Counsel.
Godey?
Yes.
McClosick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Greger?
Yes. All right, so now we've gotten down there, I'm sorry to have confused our progress here, but I think we were out of the discussion, right, on proposed resolution 2024-66 of what it was for, and we did, it is on the table, isn't it?
No, we will take care of that.
All right, so then returning to our agenda, 17.4, the resolution 2024-67, but you said that we should table that, is that correct?
Yes, you know, the correct, you know, the correct resolution's for you guys to vote on today, so we can table that, and appreciate it.
Okay, motion to table that, I, moved by Counselor Hess. Support?
All support.
Supported by Counselor McClosick, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, moving on to agenda, resolution, or that, tabling passes. Moving on to agenda item 17.5, audio visual for the community center. We previously, I think, authorized up to $10,000 for those changes, and based on the supplemental materials that the city administrators provided, that's a bid, I believe you're requesting we authorize up to $12,000.
No, I would say 13,000.
13,000.
Yep.
All right, is there a motion to supersede or preservate action and make available up to 13,000 for those?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Godey, support, or supported by Counselor Hanson, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, authorization is given. 17.6, charitable gambling request from interchurch ministries. City administrator, do you want to comment on that?
Yep, so this is, this is for the food shop, there's an interchurch ministries did a fundraiser here, they forgot to ask us for previous or passing off, I think, $150 fee to rent the community center. I think I'll let Counselor Hess speak on what he'd like to do here with this as well.
What I'd like to do on this application is, they raised money for the food shop, so I would like to see instead of $150 going to them, I'd like to see $1,500 going to them at a gambling. That money would go to the food shop.
I agree with the sentiment, I wonder.
It's legal.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
The question's here, you just change a moment.
They're asking for 150, what, you can choose to do that.
Do we, we have?
More than enough funds in the gambling fund. So the net effect would be that, your intent, Counselor, would be that that additional money would go to the food shop also, right?
Right, yeah.
But going through this group.
Right, right. Well, if it's legal, I'll support it. I mean, I would support it, yeah, I mean, wait until it's upped to 1,500.
Yeah, you guys can make any donation while you want. If somebody requested 500 bucks, you can give them 2,000, as long as we have it in there, and churches and food shelves are all gambling.
Well, I think we appropriately add, on the agenda before us, consideration of this group, when Counselor Hess is essentially moving.
It will go to this group, and they will give it to you.
Yeah, right, so I'll take that as a motion. Also supported by Counselor McClosick, but by Counselor Hess.
Hey, can I just say one thing? My name's on that because I filled it out for Mark, I have nothing to do with it. I mean, I volunteer there, but.
It's good to clarify it on the record, though, so you're not doing any conflict with it.
Right, well, and the other thing is, the city needs to put a note in that check that says $150 is refunding your fee, and the rest is a donation.
We can do that.
Yeah, just because they're going to get it, they're not going to know what it is.
Yeah, we'll clarify that in minutes as well.
All right.
This is just a one time.
This is a one time.
Carefully crafted motion on the table, I support it. And seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, that petition is adopted. Moving on to 17.7, charitable gambling request from the youth in action, isn't it? State Louis County Youth in Action. Just kind of curious, the city administrator, do you have any more background on how, I think there's a youth in action at our school.
Yep, there are residents, I should say students, from our school district that participate in youth in action, so we in the past have done that, as long as there's school members from our district.
We had decided only donate to Rar Things, does that break, does this break that rule?
So it's completely up to interpretation, and up to, you guys would like to step back. In the past, we've said, you know, we're Masabi East School District, you know, groups qualify for it. There are members from Masabi East that participate in it, but it is a sinless funding organization, so.
Do we know, my question was, do we know how many students from Masabi East actually participate in this?
I don't know, you could also table it and get us some more information.
I'd like to do that.
Can do that, we've given this before, so. Motion to table by Counselor McClosick, supported by Counselor Hess.
More information.
For more information, any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Counselor Hess, do you support that?
So we'll have that essentially table for later action. City administrator, any other matters that should come before us?
Well, was the one thing that you mentioned that we didn't talk about? Oh, yeah, we did have FEMA walkthrough on the Pine Grove Park Bridge. So we've done two things now, one was, we met in person with Monica Cross, who's our FEMA representative, she does works for, she's a contractor that handles the between Fort FEMA. So we're looking at getting funds for the bridge. Secondly, we had Josh and I met on site, the inspection team, and the mitigation efforts and things that we could do. So there was a handful, four or five people out there that did that with us. Monica Cross had asked if there were any roads that were washed out. We said there were, there was, one of my creeds we had to wash out over there, and we had June 2nd time pay on it. So she said if it was over $3,900, that would be included as an incident, so we put some time together on that, and it looked like 5,500 bucks. So hopefully we'll get some refund on that, and then we'll get either, they want to know, what's the cost to replace the bridge versus doing something else like mitigating like culverts in there, you know, like box culvert or that. So we're kind of navigating that, but it looks very promising, we can get that replaced as well as some funds for the road, so.
Are we getting the situation around creeds resolved?
So we have the stormwater planning grant that we got last year, and so we're actively working through. So the first step is to get the stormwater model built, and then we can analyze what we have to do for improvements, what size pipes, culverts, that type of stuff, but that is in process.
So if this comes through, it might help, but it wouldn't necessarily in any way cover the cost.
The FEMA restitution will be to cover the cost of repairing the road that built creeds, not anything with stormwater improvements. You can through FEMA seek, they call it mitigation, but it's a very long drawn process, this would not be a good application of that.
That budget will be shovel ready, and we can use that to apply for more grants, for more stormwater grants for construction.
Correct. So we will have a plan on the shelf comes ready.
I think that's haunted my entire term.
And one other thing I didn't, I didn't cover in mind is, is we submitted another grant application. So we got the stormwater study grant through the MCA, through their climate resiliency program, so they have a bunch of money out there, so small communities can study their resiliency against climate change, is kind of how they phrase it. Same program, they put it out for wastewater improvements, we submitted a grant application for some sanitary sewer lining, to line up to about 10,000 feet of sewer across the city, and so that would all be reimbursed in the back during, we got it. I think our ask was just over 28 hours. There'd be a 10% match on it, we coordinated with his staff, if we were so fortunate to receive that money, that, you know, could the enterprise sewer fund cover that? And we feel like, you know, we're so fortunate, we could make that work. So we should find out probably by Christmas if we get that grant, so I'm hopeful, I'm a little nervous because we already got one for the stormwater through this similar program that we kind of got our notch in the belt already, but it was worth submitting, so. Especially after having them in town and laying out the red carpet, I think we did a good job hosting, so.
Counselor Hanson?
Good. The gentleman that talked about his sewer service, do you know of any grants for wastewater that may cover a situation like that on a service line? Or because we have an older community, help pay for like getting a camera and possibly slip line?
So a couple of things, number one, I think the Exchange Joint Powers Board has a loan process in place already, where they can take out a loan, and do it in the short term, get it fixed, and then it gets reimbursed in the sale of the house. Typically what happens, and this is what I was, I've been on the phone with this family multiple times, and usually what happens in something like this is it's done on the sale of the house. So you get a quote, it goes into escrow, they sell the house, money is there, the new owner comes in, the money is negotiated as part of whatever, and then it's, and then it's released and the contract is done. So the fact that they want to do it beforehand is a little bit different, that means that they're making a personal decision to bear that full cost themselves. Sewer lines are 100% owned by the owner, from the trunk line to the house, that's how our ordinance reads. The city of Ely, if we wanted to get involved, the city of Ely does have a loan program for sewer lateral, for sewer inspections, that's a 2% interest rate that just goes right back into the pot, it's not to make money, it's to just keep that going for families. So if somebody had a $10,000 deal, they would take out a loan, certain interest rate, it goes back into the pot, the city's kind of funding it, but we're not funding it to make money, we're just funding it as a service, and they do that too. So there's things that we could look at like that, but I think Exchange Joint Powers brought something similar.
Yeah, just to clarify, that loan program is just a selling readiness loan, so the terms are kind of onerous if you have to repay it other than out of, you know, house sale proceeds at closing. So, but I think we ought to sit down with them, and intrigued by what you're saying by what you're saying about Ely, we seem to have an ample investment portfolio, maybe we could somehow use that to make things more feasible for particularly an older couple, you know, and they've been in that house for ages.
It's a little, like I say, it's a little bit weird that they're doing it before the sale, that's, it kind of makes it a little, if it's done at the sale, it's pretty clean and it's done.
I've seen other communities too, they assess it onto the property like you would like a delinquent sewer bill, right, like you put it, apply it to their company tax bill, it's another way communities do it.
What was moving me when I went on their property was, I mean, the sidewalk is just cracked all over the place and obviously it's going to be installed and it's something that's an improvement on that and the curb was very, barely visible and all cracked up and again, it seems like we're asking to upgrade something that maybe it isn't on our tenure program, but probably we'll move into that, it's not a really, well, you know, that location, but that it's, it'd be tragic to have that, to cover that economic demand for something that's going to be short lived.
Right, and we put in that, I think the city paid for that little pad up here, Tim's place where the?
That's because we built that, we did, we put that around on purpose.
But if it's that crumble, I mean, maybe there's some partnership, I don't know.
There's other thing we could do is look at it and see if we're going to abandon that old old sidewalks, because we want to go to one sidewalk only like we are on First Avenue, if that's the case, I wouldn't have any heartburn if we just abandoned all the sidewalk on the south end, and we wanted to do that.
All right, well, let's keep it on the riddance, any other matters? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion moved by Counselor McClosick to adjourn, also supported by Counselor Godey, seeing no further objections or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, we stand adjourned.